We're good to go.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us for tonight's city council study session on the federal emergency management agencies, also known as FEMA, community rating system and flood insurance. With that, I will turn it over to Madam Clerk to get us started.
Okay, we have Carrie Evenson with us this evening, and she's going to be making a presentation. Sean, did you have any opening remarks?
Oh, ma'am. Carol, jump right in.
Okay, go ahead.
Carrie, we don't get to see you enough anymore.
Right? Since we haven't been able to talk about stormwater, we're going to talk about it in a roundabout way through talking about the community rating system and flood insurance. Let me see if I can make sure. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, excellent. I'm gonna make a little bit of an adjustment here so that I can see what I need to see. All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm Carrie Evenson. I'm the Stormwater Program Manager for the City of Norman. For those of you that I haven't met yet, I'm looking forward to meeting you all. I have in the room with me several other folks who are going to help me if I get off track or if you've got questions that they need to answer. I've got Sean O'Leary, Public Works Director, Jane Hudson, Director of Community Planning, Planning and Community Development. I always get that wrong. I'm sorry, Jane. And then Todd McClellan, who's our Development Engineer as well. So, we're going to get started just with a little bit of background. It'll let me do it. There it goes. Okay. With just some information for those of you that are not familiar with the floodplain side of things that we manage here in Norman. So, start out really basic with what is a floodplain? And it's that, basically, it's that area of land around a river or a stream or a creek that is naturally subject to flooding. And in most places where these streams are undisturbed, they're flat so that as the water levels rise, it can rise and the water can rise and spread out across that floodplain. It serves to drop out flooding sediment so it can re- it can nourish, replenish, is what I'm looking for, the soils in those areas. In urban areas, you're not going to see many of these wide floodplains we've built closer to the streams because everybody likes to have that water access, water view. And so, sometimes we've constrained our creeks and streams, and they've gotten deeper and wider as we've constrained them. So, they're, they're become what they call disconnected from the floodplain. But these areas can still flood. And so, as we talk about this, we also regulate development. Now that we've seen what over time has happened in some of these areas where we've built in the floodplain, we then regulate an area of land around these creeks and streams. And may have heard it called the 100-year floodplain or a 1% chance of flood. It's, the regulatory floodplain is that land that is subject to a 1% or greater chance of flooding in any given year. The 100-year flood is a little bit deceptive, and I think the industry will eventually get away from using that phrase because people tend to think when they hear that, "Well, you know, I flooded last year, so I shouldn't flood again for another 99 years or so." But 1% chance of flood can happen every year. It can happen multiple times a year. It just depends on what the weather pattern is doing and how much rain you're receiving. We also call a regulatory floodplain a special flood hazard area. That's a FEMA term for it, so it's got to have an acronym with it. So, it's called an SFHA or a Special Flood Hazard Area. And so, when you look at Norman, all of these blue areas as well as the red area around the lake, these are the floodplains in Norman. And so, you might recognize 10 Mile Flat Creek over here to the west. You can't really see in amongst all the development Brookhaven, Imhoff, Merkel, Bishop, but they're all in here. This is the little river that goes down into Lake Thunderbird. And then there are other creeks down here like Dave Blue, Jim Blue, Clear Creek that also all feed Lake Thunderbird and are in the Lake Thunderbird watershed. So, as part of our requirements through the community rating system or CRS is we have to calculate how many acres are in our special flood hazard area. And so, we have 14,865 approximately acres in the City of Norman that are actually in the special flood hazard area. And that's important for our FEMA regulation or FEMA program, our floodplain program. So, kind of give you a visual of what a floodplain looks like. That floodplain is this entire stretch, so it's all of this area that's subject to flooding. But you also have pieces in amongst this. So, we have in the middle where the channel is and where a majority of the flooding will occur, you have the floodway. And we, with our floodplain regulations, do not allow development within the floodway because this is where we need to reserve that for normal stream flow. And we have something called the base flood elevation. And again, because this is governmental, we've got to have an acronym, so it's called the BFE. And that's the elevation at which water at a, at the 100-year flood will rise. It'll rise to that elevation. And so, if your foundation, your finished floor on your house is above the base flood elevation, then you're protecting yourself from receiving flooding during the 100-year flood. We actually have what's called freeboard requirements where if you're building within the flood fringe out here, you have to elevate your house two feet above that base flood elevation just as an added measure of protection so that your house is less likely to flood many times in this area. Okay, so with that, we have floodplain management. So, basically, we have a community program that operates to reduce the risk of current and future flooding, have zoning, building codes and floodplain ordinances. And then we have a minimum set of floodplain management standards that FEMA sets for us for communities participating in the National Flood Insurance Program or NFIP. And in order to be a CRS community, you have to participate in NFIP. And so, we do that. And part of our requirements there are to have a floodplain regulation or floodplain ordinance and to do some certain activities that we'll talk about here in a minute. So, one of the things to note with the floodplain is why do we regulate it? Why do we, why are we concerned? Well, one of the things is if you're bringing fill material in the form of dirt or houses or other types of materials into the floodplain, you're taking up space where the floodwater would have otherwise resided and causing that water to spread out elsewhere. So, before development, in this instance, where there wasn't the fill in the development here, you can see that it, this house didn't flood. When you add that fill and you reduce the capacity of that channel, of that floodplain, then it pushes the water higher and out and can affect properties that were not affected previously. So, that's why we, when, when we receive floodplain permit applications that address fill, we restrict fill in the floodplain. They have to provide compensatory storage in order to prevent their upstream or downstream neighbors from being adversely impacted by those activities. So, we mentioned the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. It was created by Congress in 1968. It's a program that works to mitigate future flood losses through sound, community enforced building and zoning codes. So, the important thing to note with this is this is all to prevent future loss. It provides access to affordable federally backed flood insurance protection for property owners. And in order for residents and businesses to obtain that flood insurance, the community has to participate in the NFIP, and Norman does. So, another part of this is the community rating system or CRS. You may have heard through various outreach activities, other presentations, that Norman is a CRS Class 6 community. So, we'll talk about what that really means and how we got there. But the goal of being a CRS community is to reduce and avoid flood damage to insurable property, strengthen and support insurance aspects of NFIP, and then foster comprehensive floodplain management. So, you can see lots of reference to protecting insurable properties and, and making sure that we adequately manage our floodplain. So, with that, communities that choose to participate in CRS, it's a voluntary program. The communities that participate are rewarded for doing more than just those minimum national standards that are set forth by NFIP. So, with that, the reward is basically that our citizens receive flood insurance premium discounts based on how many of those efforts and what kind of credit we get for those efforts from FEMA. To, and those activities can work to reduce flood damage, educate the public on flood data and insurance, and many other things that we'll go through here in just a minute. And so, the things that we need to do to get these to become, say, a CRS Class 6 are all spelled out in the CRS handbook. It's a three-inch-thick binder full of wonderful language that will help put you to sleep eventually. But it's got very detailed information on many activities that we can undertake as a community in order to increase the discount that our residents receive for flood insurance premiums. So, with that, our CRS classification, based on the total amount of credit that we receive for all the activities that we conduct. And right now, we are currently a Class 6 community. So, the lower the number, the higher the insurance discount. The minimum is a Class 9, and the maximum is a Class 1. And I don't, there are only one or two Class 1s in the entire country. There are only a handful of Class 2s, and Tulsa is actually a Class 2 community. So, with that, you can see the amount of points that we have to obtain in order to get those different CRS classes. So, Class 10 is 0 to 499, all the way up to more than 4,500 points to be a Class 1. And that gets you up, your community, a discount of 45% in the floodplain for those properties that are insured in the floodplain, should we ever reach a Class 1. Right now, at a Class 6, our residents receive a 20% discount if their properties are within our floodplain or our special flood hazard area, and then a 10% if they're outside the special flood hazard area, often referred to as Zone X in the language of floodplains. So, you can see kind of where we're at. We're right there in the middle with between 2,024.99 points. So, how do we get those points? Well, it all depends on the number of points that we achieve in 19 creditable activities in four different categories. And it becomes very complex, very fast. I am learning the CRS program as we go. Todd is our CRS Coordinator, and we just went through our very first, or my very first CRS cycle visit where we actually had to show FEMA or ISO all of the things that we do to meet these categories. So, Series 300 is the public information activities. So, some of the public education and outreach that my division does, that other divisions across the city do counts towards this. The 400 series is our mapping and regulations. For those of you that have seen our interactive map on our website, there's a floodplain layer in there that is part of what we get credit for in Series 400. And then 500 series is flood damage reduction activities. 600 series is warning and response. And for those of you that know about high hazard dams, some of the activities that we do for high hazard dams can be credited in that series. So, these are all the points that are available in each of these series. And it gives you actually the percentage of communities that actually get credit in those different areas. Not going to spend a lot of time on this. It's really detailed. But the important thing to note here is there's lots of credit available in different activities. We don't have to do them all. We have to do some combination that fits into our floodplain management program. So, as an example of one of the activities that we do, Activity 370, and part of what this presentation helps us get is some credit for flood insurance promotion. That's what Activity 370 is. There's a maximum of 110 points available in this particular activity. And there are four elements in this activity for which you can get credit. One element is the flood insurance coverage assessment, FIA. It requires an annual review of flood insurance coverage in Norman that be presented to city council. So, giving you this information, kind of showing you where we're at for flood insurance coverage gets us credit in our CRS program up to 15 points. So, as a review of where we're at with flood insurance coverage in Norman, we're at 18% of our buildings located, of the buildings located in the flood hazard area actually have flood insurance. There are a total of 863 buildings in the special flood hazard area right now. 156 of those have flood insurance. And as part of that, there are 17 repetitive loss properties, which means they've been flooded and had flood insurance claims more than once on that property. And there are 125 paid claims over time for the City of Norman on those flood insurance policies. And to give you an idea of how this breaks down by occupancy, 426 policies in single-family, 17 in 2 to 4, all other residential 12, non-residential 34. Now, that number's higher, right? But these are properties that have flood insurance that are also outside of the floodplain. So, you don't have to be, your property doesn't have to be in a floodplain in order to flood, one, and two, to have flood insurance. There are people that are, that have houses in Zone X that also have flood insurance and may also experience flood damage. Okay, and then for those policies that are actually within the floodplain, there are these A-zone type of areas. That's the 156 active insurance policies within the special flood hazard area. Sorry, keeps rolling back on me. So, possible future actions that we could take for 470 or 370, potentially to get more credit. We can increase our direct mailing to residents in these areas with different types of letters and brochures to recommend that they consider getting flood insurance. We can do direct contact with these areas through community and neighborhood events. You know, if an AHOA wanted us to meet with them and we can have, we can bring our floodplain model and talk about flooding and talk about the importance of flood insurance, lots of different ways that we can basically get the word out on the importance of having flood insurance. And then using social media is another potential option to reach out and address these issues for 370. Make sure that I've got that. Okay. So, with that, you go through and you get credit for all of these activities, and you get assigned a classification. So, when we came into the CRS program, we started out as a CRS Class 5. With the 2015 cycle visit, we reevaluate our program, and we were a Class 6. And they reevaluate our program at a CRS cycle verification visit, which occurs once every five years. So, in 2015, we had a visit. That report showed that we had enough credit for a Class 6. And so, we rolled with that and did a few things and gathered some information. And then we're notified earlier this year that ISO wanted to come out and do our 2020 cycle visit, which occurred on July 22nd. You got it. And with that, before the ISO auditor basically comes and looks at our program, or in this case, we did Zoom, we have to provide the documentation for each activity and element that we are requesting to receive credit. So, they want to be able to verify that we're actually doing all of those things that we said we would do. So, we have to provide that to our, our specialists by a certain date. So, we did that. And in case you think that that might be an easy effort, each of these folders contain multiple documents showing how we meet each element within each activity. And as an example, 420 is one on open space and open space preservation. And there are at least 35 documents in this folder that include plaits and photos and ordinances and maps. And all of these things have to be reviewed by the CRS, the ISO CRS specialist once we submit it to them. So, it was definitely an interesting process to go through. It took Todd and I weeks to gather all of this information and presented it to the specialist and went over that on July 22nd. We were very prepared, which was great because he only asked for one or two documents that we hadn't submitted, which if you've ever been through an audit, you know, if the auditor can only find a couple of things you missed, you did a pretty good job. So, with that, he gave us some information. That 30-day letter was in your packet. There have been some changes. The CRS handbook goes through changes every few years based on FEMA's requirements. The last handbook was issued in 2017, and they did some changes in the class prerequisites. So, in order to stay at a Class 6, which is our current CRS class, communities have to have a building code effectiveness grading schedule or a BSEG's classification of 5.5 or better. And that 5.5 is a rating system very similar to what FEMA does for CRS, but on our building code side, and that's for commercial building codes and residential building codes. And so, the lower the number, the better you're doing. They also get evaluated every five years. And in 2017, they went through an evaluation for BSEG's, and we are a 6.5. So, we are below what is required for Class 6. So, it's likely that we may drop a class, so we'll go to a Class 7. But there are some things that we're working on with planning to try to improve that score and get back to a 5.5. We think there are some points that the, the ISO evaluator probably missed that will allow us to get back to a 5.5. But also with that, there are some things that we can do to try to earn some more points, just like we can do with CRS. We can do some more activities. There's a way, if we had some more training or some, a few more staff members, that we can get some more credit and get back up to a 5.5 in that instance. And I'm sorry, it keeps bouncing on me. But the reason this is important is just to show you the difference in policies and how much money they, a resident would save in a Class 6 versus a Class 7. So, per our, per policy at a Class 6, they save approximately $106 a year. That would drop to $78 per year per policy. And for the city as a whole, given the number of policies that we have, it's an approximately $14,000 difference. So, we're talking about real money when we talk about this classification. Now, it's, it's for, you know, for flood insurance for, for private residents. But the more that we can do to raise our CRS class, the bigger the discount and the more likely folks are to buy flood insurance to protect their, their homes. So, with that, some next steps on this. Activity 370, by presenting this to you today, that helps us do our assessment for this year. We'll do another one when we come up to the 2025 CRS cycle visit. And if there are future actions that we can take, this is where we can discuss those and see where else we can work to promote flood insurance. And then for the CRS classification or class determination, we've got that possible reevaluation of BSEG's going on now. We've reached out to ISO on that. So, we're getting that looked at so that hopefully we can stay at a Class 6. But this may require some council support for additional inspection, inspector training, some code adoption, some other things that will help us stay at a 5.5 for the BSEG's. So, with that, I'll ask if there are any questions. Sorry about that. Or if anybody in the room has additional comments.
Councilmember Petrow. It's good to see you. Um, so I just had a couple of questions about the presentation. Why do we have no credit for the 530 and 610 designations?
So, let me pull that out. Give me just a second to make sure and refresh my memory on what those are. Flood warning. Yeah, so 610 is having a flood warning system. We don't have one of those currently. It is something that we've considered. I did put in, I put in some budget requests in the past to get a system where we can put actual gauges, gauging stations out at the particular stream segments that flood to give us advanced warning. We just haven't had the funding for that yet. When we do have it, then that's something that we can request some credit for. 540?
530.
530. So, there is one that is the drainage maintenance section. Until this 2017 handbook, we, you had to, you had to maintain all of the publicly owned channels. You had to inspect them after, annually, after a major rain event and based on citizen complaints, and then do the maintenance that was required. We currently don't have the staffing levels to do that much inspection and maintenance, but it is something that I'm working on. We don't have it, we didn't have all of the documentation ready yet for this cycle visit. But let me tell you, by next cycle visit, I will have all of my procedures and documentation. We're just working to it slowly and, and trying to fit it in with our already stressed and overworked maintenance staff.
Okay, I was just curious. And my other question was, can you be more specific about what building regs they would like for us to implement? I would be, my personal opinion is I would prefer to come up into compliance with the building regs that they would like us to have than send out mailers encouraging to buy insurance. You know what I mean? Like, I would rather prevent, be a part of the solution of preventing as well.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll say it's a, it, the BSEG's rating is just as complicated as the CRS. So, it's not just the codes that we're adopt, where we have, we've adopted. It's also how frequently we're adopting them. And it's how are our staff trained? And it's how are our staff trained? How many staff do we have? So there's lots of things that go into that BSEG's rating. And you're right, that is definitely something that we're gonna look at. But we can do all of the above as well.
Yeah, do you have any idea like what particular code changes they would like for us to implement?
It's not particular code changes, it's adoption of particular years. So if you are, so code changes every two years, I believe, international building codes are, are approved every two years. And so if you adopt them within that two-year cycle, then you get full credit. But if you're, say, in the third year when they come to evaluate you, you have, let me see how Bob explained that. If you, if you're in the 2015, Jane, correct me when I stray. If you, if you've adopted the 2015 international building code and they come evaluate you in 2018, you're three years out and you don't get full credit. But if you have adopted the 2017 building codes, if we're going on our two-year cycle in 2018 when they evaluate you, then you get full credit. So it's a rolling, every two years, we would have to be adopting the international building codes. And unfortunately, even the state is behind sometimes more than two years on adopting the, the building codes.
Is memory serving me correctly that we're still under 2015?
I think for some of them, yes.
What do we need to do to get current?
Well, Councilmember Petron, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay. So if we were going to move forward and adopt the current codes, we would be looking at approximately a year-long process. We would, we would have to get committee meetings, we'd have to get the community involved, and there would be some local amendments. Typically, there's always local amendments. And believe it or not, we actually get points taken away when we do local amendments. But that was one of the things I talked to Bob Christian, our permit manager today, and asked him, you know, what it would take. And we would be looking at a year to get the new codes adopted.
Okay, well, again, I think I, what is that, ounce of prevention worth a pound of cure? It seems to me like that's probably the best practices that they're wanting us to implement. So I would be interested in putting that. And if the mayor is supportive, I'd, I'd be interested in doing the regulations, the compliance with what the feds would like for us to do to prevent floods more than sending out mailers. But anyway, but not, not to say that we can't do both, but.
And a quick question for Dr. Carey. In the storm alert system, we know that through Annalisa's office, we've got thousands of people signed up to receive emergency alerts for a lot of different reasons. Dr. Carey, do you think that if we had the sensors in the right place, that the alert system could be done through one of our existing mechanisms? Because it doesn't sound like it's the thing where you go put up another siren or you sound the tornado sirens with, you know, little beeps instead of a minute-long blast. Are they really specific in terms of how people are notified when those sensors are activated?
They're, from my research on this, they're not that specific on how people are notified. It's more that you have a notification system. And sometimes just putting out that notice on Facebook or through a citywide alert system or something like that is enough to get credit. As government works, you know, you gotta have that written procedure for how you're gonna do it and have that process for how that moves forward. And I think that's something that I would like to eventually talk to Chief King and, and start to work that through the emergency management side of things.
And so counsel, as Dr. Carey indicated, this was her first pass through this ISO process. I would also indicate that Jane is new in her position. And so everybody who's got fingers on this, this is everybody's first walk through. But I'm very comfortable and confident with the level of competency we have in these positions. We will be able to advance and our goal would not be to just maintain the level six, but to advance that to a level five under the tutelage of the ladies that we're talking with tonight.
Hey, Councilmember Bearman.
Um, so I kind of want to see if I can talk about this in a little bit more of a big picture way. So just so I understand, this effort is solely aimed at the 863 structures in the SFHA? Is that correct?
So it's not necessarily limited to those that are in the SFHA. We target them because they have the higher likelihood of being flooded. But it's really community-wide. Anyone who gets flood insurance, regardless of where they're at, gets that discount if we participate in the CRS program. And they get more of a discount, the more things we do, the higher our classification is. So it really benefits the community as a whole. But those folks that are in the floodplain are the ones that we tend to target because they, they need to have that information to protect themselves.
Right. And yeah, it seems like up to a level six, it benefits structures or properties outside the SFHA. Above six, it, it, the, the continued rise through those ranks benefits the structures in the SFHA.
Right, they, they're limiting, you're, you're seeing the 10% reduction in outside the floodplain, and it pretty much stays as, at, at that kind of level, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the, as Todd just told me, he, and a good reminder is, the least expensive flood insurance that anyone can purchase is flood insurance for a property that's outside the floodplain in zone X.
Okay. Because what I, what I'm trying to think about here is kind of the cost benefit analysis of how much the public is spending, because obviously we're spending taxpayer dollars when we do this work, versus the community-wide or the SA, the SFHA benefit. So, you know, I'm just, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we're kind of balancing that cost benefit. And I think that there are definitely some policies we can enact, like flood warnings as, as an example, that has a much higher public benefit in terms of, you know, lives saved and things like that, while kind of weighing the cost to the public for additional actions that benefit a very small number of properties. So just trying to make sure that I, that I understand kind of where the benefit is, where the, where the effort is going, and making sure that whatever we do has the widest community benefit, because we are spending everyone's tax dollars. And, you know, I just want to make sure that when we spend them, we're not aiming them at such a small percentage of properties, you know, to kind of support or lower the premiums for just those property owners versus efforts that have a much wider community impact. My last question is, how frequently or how widely does the F8S, whoa, that acronym, the SFHA increase? So like, how many, I don't know if it's square acres or square miles, have we added to the SFHA in the last decade? Just to give a marker.
So the, the floodplain, the boundaries only change when they're re-studied and reevaluated. And that is a very intense process that involves a lot of modeling. It's a FEMA process. FEMA manages that. So it can be initiated at the local level and go through the state to FEMA to be done, but it doesn't happen that frequently. And I'll give you an example of where we will be seeing some map changes here in the next few months is in Ten Mile Flat and Brookhaven Creek. Those, uh, those two watersheds have been re-studied and remodeled, and there are going to be some changes to the floodplain boundaries in both of those watersheds. And so we did about, how long ago was that? About six months? It seemed, oh, yeah, it started six years ago. But about six months or so, sorry, COVID's got my timeframes all off. We notified, it may have been longer than that. We notified all of the properties that were either coming into or going out of the floodplain. We held public meetings. Councilmember Petron and Councilmember Scott were involved in those meetings to, to let them know, show them the maps and, and show them how this would affect them. But that we have to adopt, we'll be coming back to you for, to council to adopt those in the next few months. And then, once they're adopted, they are what we regulate to. But that doesn't happen very frequently, because that process can take many years to, to be done.
Okay. And then that actually, I, I lied, that was not my last question. Your response gave me one more. How frequently, and maybe I should know this, but how frequently are we allowing continued development in these, in these zones, in the SFHA zone, zones?
So it, it depends on what activity is going on. They have to come to, if they're going to do any development within the floodplain, they're not allowed to in the floodway. But if they're trying to do any development in the floodplain, then they have to come to the floodplain permit committee to get a, a permit to be authorized to do that first. And so a lot of what we've seen, and we don't see that many anymore, I think we're getting maybe half a dozen.
It used to be 15 to 20 a year. It's going down every year.
Yeah, we're seeing, we're seeing about half a dozen in the last couple of years when I've been a part of the floodplain permit committee as staff support. And there are things like, you know, there may be a, they're changing out some poles for transmission lines, right? As an example. So that's work in the floodplain. They have to come to the floodplain permit committee for that. Occasionally, there'll be some redevelopment of houses that already exist within the floodplain. They have to stay within their original footprint. Then they also, in order to rebuild, or if they're going to expand, they have to meet our current regulations, which mean they have to elevate the house. And that can be pretty expensive. And so we're seeing a few of those every year, but not that frequently. And there's no, very few larger developments that are involving the floodplain. The water quality protection zone goes along with the floodplain in those types of developments where they have to provide, either preserve that area at the 100-year floodplain or they can shrink it down to a minimum of 25 feet from top of bank, undisturbed, if they put in engineered solutions to remove nitrogen and phosphorus. So it, in the developments that we're seeing in the Lake Thunderbird watershed, floodplain regulations and water quality protection zone are working hand-in-hand to try to protect that area.
Okay, but we're not seeing a whole lot of new commercial or residential development in these areas?
No, we haven't seen very much at all on that.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. Yeah, you actually just answered my question on WP or WQPC. But I do have another one. Do we have any data showing how frequently we've been experiencing the 100-year flood recently?
I don't, I haven't personally gathered that information. Do we, he wants to know if we have data on the 100-year flood, how often it's occurred in the last couple of years.
Or can you tell?
Sure we can.
2015.
2015 was, was the last, yeah. We'll, we'll have to research that some more, Councilmember Peacock, to get you an exact, like, year by year, if that's what you need.
Just, you know, you read in the news, it seems like it's occurring more and more every single year. So I, I was wondering if that had any impact on those SFHA boundaries in, in the review process?
Well, and that, when they, when FEMA reevaluates the floodplain boundaries, they're starting to consider that and considering the changes that we're seeing in precipitation over time. So that is being accounted for as we get our boundaries reevaluated.
Yeah, thank you. And one more. Have we identified any obvious areas for our next five-year cycle of improvement?
As far as where we can gain some additional credit, the drainage maintenance section, for sure. I have some policies in place. It's just a matter of getting inspections and my documentation in order. And that, we can definitely get more points for next year or next cycle visit, I should say. The flood warning system, if we implement that, that would be a place to get additional credit. One of the things that we looked at for activity 330, which is the public education and outreach section, which those of you that have experienced stormwater, COVID has really been hard for us, because we haven't been able to get out and do the things that we do. But that is a big thing for us. And there, we have maxed out our credit without doing a program for public information. And that is something that we're considering to gain us 150 more points just by having that PPI in place. And I think, we're, we're talking about it, but I think that's a relatively easy one that we can do. Lawton does it, and so I'm gonna pick Cynthia Williams' brain a little bit on how she's doing it. But there's ways that we can do it. Some of it is limited by manpower, though, and, and we're gonna just keep doing the best we can with, with the staff that we have.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. One, I'm excited to hear that just having this meeting is saving the residents of Norman money by getting this update. So I really appreciate you and the rest of staff putting this together. One of the things I wanted to ask about, because we've done it a couple of times since I've been on council, is removing structures from the floodplain and even the floodways sometimes. I have, there may be more, but the two I'm thinking of, since I've been on council, is the house on Main Street, just south of Roundabout. And then, if people aren't familiar, that was a family that literally came to city council one night and sat through the whole meeting and then got up at the end and literally begged the city council to help them. Houses in the floodplain way, right there, lots of problems, mold. And so we were thankfully able to address that situation. But also the Callaway House, the very large apartment complex on Brook Street, across from the stadium. That was the site of a former apartment complex. And a couple, one or two of the buildings were in the floodway. They were basically in the creek, really. And this new apartment complex removed those buildings out of the, out of the floodway. They did bring in fill, but they expanded the floodplain in the other direction. And so those are two of the most notable projects. I, I can recall that we've been able to get structures out. And so I was really wondering if you might talk about the credits or points we might get for that stuff? And what the budget we have is for the type of things like that house, where we try to buy properties that are in, in floodways, that were built before FEMA standards, and try to remedy those situations in our core area?
Absolutely. Do you want to, Sean, you want to address that, or you want to?
I'll just say, great question. Appreciate the mention of the apartment complex there in Bishop Creek, I guess, that's Bishop.
Bishop's Landing, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Now, that's, so I can recall about six single-family and then that multifamily property, the last 10 years that we've been able to, either the city has, has done a buyout, which we did on the single-family, or the developer owner has done their own mitigation, as they did on the apartment complex. So those are great, great examples of good floodplain management. Right now, or in the past, for those six single-family cases, we have brought those to council when the opportunity presented itself. So in the case, about 10 years ago, I think there were four or five homes. They went up for sale as a group. We identified it in the, or they were going to sheriff's sale, I think. We identified that, came to council, and council found funding for the city to go purchase those properties. We did that, and then of course took down all the structures after the acquisition of the properties, and they became green space. Same thing happened, as you mentioned, on East Main Street for a couple of units. So they, it's sort of a opportunity situation that presents itself from time to time. So they, it's sort of an opportunity situation that presents itself from time to time. And I think the council has used Green Belt funds for most of those acquisitions. And your Green Belt account is, has some funding in it today. So I think we're in good position if that case presents itself. The only other thing I'll mention on this topic, and Carrie probably knows more details than I, but there are several large buyout cases in your stormwater master plan, Imhoff being the biggest area. And we would love to pursue those programs. They're not very popular when we, when we initiate it. People don't like to get bought out if they don't want to get bought out. That's that in the domain scenario. So, those buyout programs have to be very carefully navigated. FEMA has a grant program that Carrie has explored, and we're continuing to look at that. But those are kind of the different category of cases where the city would initiate the process as opposed to the property owners coming to us.
Appreciate that. I, I definitely, you know, wouldn't want to force people to move or sell their properties, but I, I would want to make sure that every property that is in a floodway or floodplain knows that, hey, if you're interested, the city wants to do it, would like, is very interested in purchasing your property because it's in a floodplain. And that really could solve a lot of flooding problems in other parts of core Norman, especially along Imhoff Creek. And so, we do get credit, though, for removing structures from the floodway and floodplain, though?
Absolutely, that gets into that repetitive damage claim kind of category with that Carrie mentioned earlier. If we can take those structures that have been flooded multiple times, we know that that's gonna help the rest of the floodplain in that area. And yes, the programs that FEMA supports are voluntary. We would never mandate that. But we've identified in our master plan, and in fact, in the bond issue that failed in 2019, we had a couple of buyout programs in there. And as you know, we just weren't able to do that because the, the bond program was not authorized by the voters.
But we still get credit right now for the acquisition that we did for those that were along, south of Main Street, along Bishop. And there's a couple other properties I'm forgetting, but, but we still get credit to date for those acquisitions. Seven altogether, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the Callaway House, that one, it was, I mean, I was already pretty aware of stormwater and our stormwater master plan and prior council's approval of it or acceptance of it. But the Callaway House was really the first, like, big crash course on stormwater. And I think Sean would really recall, especially a lot of the terms like cloemer and lomer and other ones like that, that we had to learn and hear about so often during those processes. And, and we learned about how difficult it can be to try to, to, like, in the sense of the senior center, Andrews Park, try to go through a revision process of the floodplain and all, and get permission to build in it. And all that stuff can be a very lengthy process. And so, I would just say that I really support efforts to try to remove structures from floodplains and floodways. And in most recent years, we have talked a lot, especially in the Center City policy, about how to go about developing the core area of Norman more densely while protecting, or even in many cases, trying to restore some of these urban streams that are entirely concrete or things like that. So, I really appreciate what staff is doing with the resources that you have and, and look forward to continuing these discussions. Thanks.
Councilmember Hall.
Well, first, thanks, thanks to all of you. This is informative and, you know, another area to really do some thinking about. My question, well, I have a couple of questions. When we're talking about the seventeen properties that have filed multiple claims, are they all in the same area? Or are there specific areas that we know this keeps happening? Do we, do we have any information about that?
We have information on that. We have some restrictions on what we can share as far as where they are, but they're across the city.
Okay.
They're not isolated to a particular, like, Imhoff Creek. There are some that are along Imhoff Creek, but there are others, there are others that are even outside the floodplain that have experienced flooding and, and property damage multiple times.
Okay. And, and if you, if you have a property outside the area, how, how do you even know that you should probably get flood insurance? I mean, why are people purchasing flood insurance if they're not in that SF?
Just call it a floodplain, I think that.
We should, we should bring back Councilmember Scanlon to answer that question. He is the poster child for that, that issue. And he flooded twice. His property is outside the floodplain, and he's flooded twice for about $230,000 worth of damage in total. That's how they know, that when they get flooded.
So they're buying, they're buying flood insurance after their first experience with flooding?
Generally speaking, yes, not always. I'm sure some maybe do their homework, but I know in the case of, I hate to point him out, but in the case of Councilmember Scanlon, he was flooded in 2007 in August of what we thought was a hundred-year storm that particular year. He didn't know he was subject to flooding. He bought flood insurance, and he got re-flooded in 2015. Same kind of a hundred-year event. So fortunately, he received more benefits from his insurance in 2015 than he did in 2007. But he was, he was glad he did that, obviously.
Which goes back to your point, Dr. Evenson, of the hundred-year, flood, the hundred-year possibility is really a misnomer, that it could literally happen to you every single year. Okay. And the other thing, I was wondering about the Class Six that we're currently in. And I, and you mentioned that the lower the number, you know, that is the goal, is to lower your number. And so, we started at one point at Class Five and then got reduced to Class Six. So, do these class changes just occur every five years? Or do you have the possibility of, as, as you said, we just had a five-year visit? So, do we have the possibility of changing that number? Or is it on a five-year cycle where we see that change?
So, if we implement some additional activities that we think can get us some additional points, and we're close enough to the boundary between classes, because there's 500 points there. So if we're on the low end of a Class Six, we're gonna have to do quite a bit to get the extra points to get to a Class Five. But if we do that, and we think we have enough points to move to a Class Five, we can ask FEMA and ISO to come reevaluate us for a class change. But generally, it happens once every five-year on a cycle visit. And you can go up or down on those cycle visits. It also depends a lot on how they credit activities. There was a really big change, my understanding, from the previous version of the CRS handbook to the 2017 CRS handbook. And from just my experience with some of the other CRS communities within Oklahoma, when they were reevaluated, most of the cities dropped because of some of the changes in the way the evaluators were looking at how many points certain activities were being credited for. So, it can be a combination of things. This evaluation period went really well because we worked with the ISO specialist. And for instance, with the Public Education and Outreach, I thought we had given him enough information to max us at 200. When we met with him, he actually said, well, I've only got you at 100. I'm like, oh, wait a minute. You know how much public education and outreach I do. I can give you more activities so that we can get up to 200. So we walked through how he scored things and what I had, and we provided him with some additional information, and we were able to max out our points at 200. So those are the things that, sometimes it just takes a little bit of discussion with the specialist to make sure we're reviewing how much credit we should get for an activity the same way they are, and discuss why it might be different.
The other thing I was curious about is, you mentioned that the Class One and Class Two cities, that they're rare, there are not very many that meet that qualification or that point system. So, do we have a goal? Are we trying to improve to get out of that Class Six, to move into that Class Five? Is that realistic? Based on manpower and resources that we have now? Can, can we do, you know, are we looking to change the class? Or how do you look at that for the future?
I think my goal would be to, to do what we can to see if we can get enough points to move to a Class Five. We haven't gotten our total point score yet for this year. So I really want to see where we're at this year, how close we are to that Class Five. When we talked to Dave on the 22nd, he still hadn't, he has to send some components out to technical reviewers in order to have them graded. So, we hadn't gotten those back, so we didn't know a total yet. So, I would like to see what that is. And if we're pretty close and we can get some additional credit in like 540, there's a high-hazard dam section in 630. We're getting some state credit for the dam safety program that the state has, but there are a few things that we could do in, on that side of things as well to get a little extra credit. So there are ways that we can do it. Some of it will take just some tweaks to what we're already doing. Others will take a little bit more resources to do. But that's, I, I want to see where we're at with point score. And if we're close enough, that would be my goal for the next five years, is to see what we can do to get us back to a Class Five.
Okay.
If I may, Councilmember Hall, great, great question. If I may, to say that, that our stormwater master plan and our stormwater funding proposals for the last several years have sought out to do what you're asking. And so, we're, we're kind of maxed out on resources. That's, that's part of the, you all know this very well, that Norman is not gonna move up very much more until we get funding and staffing to do this work. That's what Tulsa is doing better than us. It's that simple, it really is.
And I'm assuming if we could address our stormwater issues, that would also be useful.
That's correct. Our part of that proposal was more staffing, more resources, more activities, more, more boots on the ground. And that's what we lack today.
Thank you. I think my other questions have already been answered, so thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, Mayor.
All right, I'll chime in with my two cents. I mean, clearly, boots on the ground is what we need, more people, more money. But we've always known that about stormwater. Hopefully, one thing that we can accomplish is the mailing. I, I agree with what Councilmember Petron was saying. But then, someone else had touched on, how many people actually know they live in a floodplain? So I feel like that would not only be like educational overall, but a good thing for them to know, especially if it changes. And hopefully, besides creating the initial mailer, that wouldn't be too staff-intensive. So is, I mean, is that something that you think is reasonable that we could move forward with in addition to perhaps changing some of the regulations like Councilmember Petron had mentioned? Like a double effort?
Yeah, I think there are definitely some ways that we can add that. You know, with mailing, we have to look at our budget for postage and things like that. Right now, we're doing an annual letter to everyone who lives in the floodplain that has property within the floodplain. We can look at different ways to target them or provide different types of information using current resources. It's always something, as we look at our program, we reevaluate what we're doing, how can we improve it? One thing I'm considering, and we'll talk about this as a future adjustment, is those folks that live in an inundation zone for a high-hazard dam. How many people know about that? And should we send them an annual letter like we do those that are in the floodplain? Just to say, hey, did you know there's this high-hazard dam here? And here's the process, you know, we would use to notify you. We have procedures in our emergency action plans for the high-hazard dams, just to get the word out to those folks. And, and that's available. If we do that, there's some credit in the CRS program for things like that as well.
I'm sure Councilor Bierman would, will join me in support of that. Same with Councilwoman Foreman. I used to live in one of those neighborhoods that was in the area, and I had no idea. So I think that is very important.
Back when I lived in Maryland.
What about Ward Three over here? We just had, like, the notorious bridge collapse.
Oh, true, true, don't you?
Hey, the Canadian River runs through Ward Two and Seven also, by the way.
So, if one of those.
Not a competition, guys.
I've got, we've got rivers in our woods.
Okay, all right. If one of those items that we can help with is ward meetings, obviously, you see, we're all trying to capture the flag for the most flood issues. So maybe we could do that. We, I know we have a lot on our plates right now in terms of the geo-bond issue. And again, hopefully, all of you are, are getting creative on scheduling something to reach your residents to help us get that initiative across the finish line. But this sounds like we have time in the future. Maybe we could do a meeting, everyone. There's water rate increase somewhere on the horizon. So, if you have these areas, maybe it could be both water rate increase and here's another area where you need to be educated on. And hopefully, that is how we can help with the, the lack of staff that we're dealing with right now.
Mayor? If I might, I also wanted to commend staff. When we, when Councilmember Scott and I did the changes in boundary meetings, one of the things that was really concerning to me in my ward was, I have a mobile home community that they rent their lots, and staff actually went out and put a notice on each one of those homes because if it was just to go to the owner of record, it wasn't some corporation in California. So, to get the word out that, hey, you need to get renters insurance, you're in a floodplain now, and you're really at high risk. You need to get some renters insurance to cover your, your things, so they didn't lose everything. Anyway, they worked really hard and met with our residents, and I'm really appreciative of it. So thank you. Sean and Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman, you had your hand up. Did you change your mind?
Well, mine was just sort of a question that Councilmember Petron. I've only bought one house, but when I did my closing, I got the certificate of, like, where the floodplain was. I mean, I knew I wasn't in one. Is that not a common thing at closings that people don't know? I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, we've actually, part of what we get credit for, one of the things we ask for, is it's part of the disclosure form that you check if it is, if it's in the floodplain. There's a little box on that form that everyone has to submit when they close, if I've got that right. So, yeah, that, that's out there. That's something that should be asked for. We often, Todd and I, part of our duties is to provide technical assistance, and we often get calls from real estate agents asking about particular properties that they're getting ready to list, you know, are they in a floodplain? You know, that kind of thing. And so, we, we provide that assistance when it's asked for. And then we advertise that on our website, too.
I might just mention, a pretty good percentage of our flood-prone properties or properties within the floodplain or homes in the floodplain were built before the floodplain regulations kicked in in the seventies. Norman joined the program in 1976. So think about the homes built in. With all due respect, Councilmember Hall, Ward Four has, has a lot of pre-1976 homes right in the heart of the Imhoff Creek channel area. They didn't know they were doing something wrong back in 1964, 55. They were just building, and we had no regulation. So, that's a lot of what we have in Norman, the folks who just didn't know any better back in the 50s and 60s.
Part of the charm of Ward Four.
Yeah.
And also, Councilmember Foreman, we haven't adopted this map yet. We've done all the meetings, and this is the lead-up credits for the rating. This is a new part of it that didn't, wasn't something that we were, you know, discussing at the time. But, so people who are dealing with disclosures right now, which isn't when you close, it's when you actually list, you fill out your disclosure form. They, unless they, you know, were paying attention to the letters that they got in the mail from us, they still might not be with knowledge that their, you know, house, that they've been, you know, told, you're about to be in a floodplain. Your house technically is, it's just that council hasn't adopted it yet. So we're still operating on the old map until we body vote.
Okay. I'm seeing no other questions there or comments.
All right. Thank you for this information on a very important topic that is always on our radar because we're always gonna try and solve it. But having more information. because we're always going to try and solve it. But having more information, the better. And I think we have some action items on where we can connect and educate our residents as well. So anything that is specific for Ward, I would ask that you go ahead and send it to us directly to help keep us on track. So help us help you type thing. And I really appreciate all that you guys do. And as we pointed out, and you do it with very little staff, and it's impressive and definitely worth recognizing. So thank you for everything. And if there are no other comments, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.